That we all, our deepest and sincere condolences to this family on the passing of their death, Mr. Harrington Smith Senior, who has had a great legacy in South Carolina and Bennington, and we all will remember him in our own way. We pray for his family. His prayer.
Lord, let me gather today at this council meeting. We ask that you will be in our midst. Help us to make decisions that will be pleasing to you. Help us to discuss the matters at hand in a reasonable way and be willing to give up having our own way. Let this meeting be productive as it shall be in all the areas of our life. Help us to keep you at the forefront of our minds as we do the word set before us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Turn on the mic. I forgot my mic. Turn on the mic. You have approval of agenda items? Please check the agenda. Any additions, corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as prepared.
A move that we approve the agenda as.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second that we accept the agenda for tonight's meeting as prepared. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. It's unanimous. Next, we have a public hearing for Ordinance 766 enlarging the boundaries of that joint county industrial and business park with Dillon County and other matters related thereto, known as Project Unique. No one present wants to make any comments. We will close the public hearing. Next, approval of minutes for the March 13, 2018 regular council meeting. After your review, any corrections, additions, or editing changes necessary?
Madam Chair, a move that we accept the minutes is written.
Second.
It's been moved and second that we accept the minutes from the March 13, 2018 regular meeting. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. It's unanimous. Oh, excuse me. You were absent. We hope you are recovered. Thank you. Oh, business. Ordinance 766 and ordinance enlarging the boundaries of that joint county industrial and business park with Dillon County and other matters related thereto, also known as Project Unique. This is third reading. Questions, comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Question.
Second.
It's been moved and second that we approve third reading of Project 766. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. Ordinance 767 and ordinance approving an agreement by and between Marlboro County and the city of Bennettsville for exchange of services. This is second reading. In your packet are detailed information of the services that we have customarily exchanged with the city of Bennettsville. Questions or comments? You want to make comments, Mr. Marlin?
Yes, ma'am. This is the annual agreement you do with the city of Bennettsville. We're not, staff's not proposing any changes other than the city has requested that the county do enforced collections on properties they placed the lien on for cleaning up the property. So, you know, they're going through a pretty aggressive effort to do that. That's the only change at this time. Everything else is status quo.
There are no adjustments in the fees on either side?
No, the staff did review the valuation of the different items in here and there, you know, there is some, it could be, you know, further evaluated or further action taken, but at this time, I feel like it's our best recommendation to move forward this year with what we have. We do have a better understanding of what's there, though, if we were to take on certain things ourselves instead of having the city do them.
All right. Questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion for approve the second reading.
For move, second.
It's been moved and second that we approve the second reading of Ordinance 676 for exchange of services and agreement between Marlboro County and the city of Bennettsville. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. It's unanimous. Ordinance 768 and ordinance approving an agreement by and between Marlboro County and Drug Free Coalition. The second reading. Mr. Marlin, any details?
Yes, ma'am. We, the county has previously served as a financial, the fiscal agent for Drug Free Marlboro, and all this is a renewal of that. They do a grant. They receive the money to run the program, and they basically run the purchasing and all that stuff through the county so that we can keep that for them. And so this is just a renewal of agreement you already had in place for some time.
All right. I'm familiar with this organization, and Ms. Pam Ashwood has been the director since its inception, and she does a wonderful job in working with the youth in the community. So this is an asset to have. Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for approving second reading.
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved and second that we approve the second reading of Ordinance 768. Moving on to Ordinance 769. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you. That's all I can hear. All in favor, please let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. Ordinance 769 and ordinance approving an agreement with the school district of Marlboro County for school resource officers for Blenheim and Wallace Schools. Second reading. Comments?
Yes, ma'am. This is a, this agreement has been sent to us, and we've reviewed it along with Sheriff Lemon and made a couple of changes and sent it back to the school district. We're waiting for them to send it back, but it's basically to provide the two officers as indicated in the title, and the school district will reimburse us for those costs. So it's a good thing. We're just waiting on the details, and everything's moving forward.
All right. Any questions or comments?
I have, um, we have said that it probably not be, um, I don't think the SRO is how important it is, but my only and main concern is why they just look at two schools. In my eye, every child is important. And Clough, we have two schools also, and as a yet, they have not even entertained the idea of having an SRO in Clough, Clough School. But we know, um, Blenheim and Bennettsville probably got more students. They don't get the one child that's lost. And I don't, I don't know, is it something that the school board got entertained or something that we got entertained, but if I don't speak out for my district and our kids, it'd be like I don't have a concern. And, you know, we are every child is important. And we got School Discovery and Clough Elementary School, and if I'm a criminal or if I want to criminalize, the first place I'm gonna go, we didn't know who our law enforcement is. I'm not gonna go to a school and they got SROs there. I'm gonna go to a school that got minimum security. You know, I don't, you know, don't know how that came about. They believe other schools out.
Mr. Woods, in reference to what your concern, and it's valid, but the city of Bennettsville's police department handles the SRO. So Wallace and Blenheim have no police department, so the school, I don't know what they base their decision on.
We need, I mean, it's.
So you have a police department in?
We have a police department in Clough. Yes, we do.
Then that may be the venue to discuss having coverage.
Wait, and that's a discussion, a discussion that need be done to the council, to the school board, or, you know, I'm, that question, I'm asking.
Well, I know a little bit. I know that Sheriff Lemon is not here, but I.
Yeah, so I can address a little bit. I think Sheriff Lemon is working with the school board to try to get school resource officers in those areas. That's the reason why he's not at the meeting now. He's meeting with them, but he's in the process of doing that.
Right. And if, if, if that were to happen in, before next meeting, we could amend this ordinance to have the same arrangement with, if it were to, if the school board decided to give the funding to the county sheriff to do it, then it could be put into this agreement. I think as, as was said, they've initially approached the town of Clough about doing it because it's kind of like you said, McCall has that, and so does Bennettsville. So I think your concerns are warranted, but hopefully the sheriff's gonna be able to work it out.
That's good.
All right. All right. Now, where were we? Is there a motion on the floor?
I might have moved that we accept.
We have a, we have a motion on the floor.
Mr. Black.
Yes, and then he called the question.
Besides the.
All right. It's been moved and second that we approve the resolution. Excuse me. I skipped ahead too fast. Second reading for Ordinance 769 for resource officers for the Blenheim and Wallace Schools. And as Mr. Marlin said, amendments may be made before the third reading. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. Unanimous. The next item, Resolution 031801, a resolution in support of I-73 that was submitted for consideration by a group. And in response, Marlboro County Council has its own resolution that we'd like to present. I will read it. We're getting it. I want to make sure that everyone hears this. It's important. Bear with me. Resolution 041801, a resolution expressing Marlboro County's position with regards to the improvement to transportation corridors in the county and directing staff to pursue the strategic initiatives set forth by council. Whereas as part of their recent strategic planning process, Marlboro County Council identified the need for improved transportation routes in the county. Council determined that this need is immediate and critical to the economic development and overall betterment of the county. And whereas the council has been requested to issue a resolution of support for the interstate I-73 project, which could potentially address the needs identified by the council. And whereas in a recent meeting, supporters of I-73 advised that the proposed southern section of I-73 from I-95 to the South Carolina beaches, once funded, is seven to 10 years from completion. And upon completion, the northern portion from I-95 to North Carolina is projected to be 10 or more years after the southern portion, therefore not providing the immediate need for enhancement of transportation routes in the county. And whereas in addition to the timeline for I-73, county council has concerns about the I-73 project with regards to the limited interchanges, the potential implementation of emergency, and other vehicles needing to cross the path of the highway, the lack of funding for infrastructure necessary to fulfill benefits from industrial properties, properties adjacent to the highway, and the impact of the highway on the downtowns of Bennettsville and towns in the county. And whereas additional information and research is necessary to understand these concerns. And whereas expansion of the existing South Carolina Highway 38 from Bennettsville to Hamlet, North Carolina, for two to four, from two to four lanes better achieves the council's desire for improved transportation corridors in a more expedient timeline without the potential negative impacts of I-73. Now therefore be it resolved that Marlboro County Council does hereby support the improvement and expansion to four lanes of the existing South Carolina Highway 38 from Bennettsville to US Highway 74 in Hamlet, North Carolina. Council directs its staff to develop a plan to pursue support, evaluation, and funding of said project. Council preserves, excuse me, council reserves its support of I-73, particularly the northern section, until such time that the issues and concerns outlined in this resolution are better understood. Comments, questions? Anything you want to add?
I just, this is, you know, this is, I was asked to draft this in response to concerns that we're hearing more and more from the citizens about the impact of 73, and also to reflect what council has already adopted in the strategic plan of a push to four lane 38. So, you know, this is not necessarily against I-73, but I-73 is a long, long ways away if they secure the $2.4 billion that needed to build it, which I think's right. So this resolution states councils, restates councils' initiative, strategic initiative to pursue four lane 38, and just says that we need to learn more about 73. Just so you know, I mean, as administrator, I get a lot of calls and a lot of people emailing me, and there is a lot of concern in the community about, you know, would this, would 73 negatively impact the town of Bennettsville or Blenheim because it would move everything out. And so this resolution, you know, would state your, would give me sort of something to go with to go start planning and chasing funding and plans for 38 while kind of holding, holding off on 73 till you hear some more.
Yeah, we've, I've heard just, you know, for an I-73 meeting, I went to an I-73 meeting, and they did say it was maybe 15, 20 years out. I mean, before anything would be moved forward up here, and, you know, we, and we expressed that, you know, 20 years out for waiting for something to happen here in Marlboro County would be a long time. It'd be tough for us, and you know. And I've also heard that, you know, our existing roads need improvement and work on before we try to take on something as big as I-73. We know the need for it, but you know, there, from hearing from people in our community, there's other things that takes top priority. So with that, I'll make a motion we.
I want to make one other comment.
Go ahead.
One other comment, too, regarding 38 with the inland port at Dillon, the impact this gonna have on this county. It's very important that we see about getting 38 four lane because the traffic would definitely increase, and it would behoove everybody if we could get those trucks in and out on a better highway that's four lane and stuff. So our immediate help is gonna be coming from the inland port and everything it's gonna bring. So definitely, you know, Ron's got the right idea, you know, let's keep 38, and all we can do to support it and get support for it.
In addition to that, in the COG meeting last night, there were concerns expressed already about the impact of the truck traffic on Highway 34 in and out of the inland port. And I've seen an increase in truck traffic in, in the county. I'm out and about early in the mornings, and I've seen a lot of 18-wheelers coming right through Bennettsville, which we have a bypass. So my sentiments are that this resolution is on target, and it represents, I'm hoping, the feeling of my other fellow council members. With that being said, I'll entertain your motion now, sir.
Yep. I entertain a motion for resolution 041801.
It's been moved and second that we adopt Resolution 041801. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. It's unanimous. Next, we move to new business. It's that time of the year, Ordinance 770, an ordinance to adopt the annual budget and to make appropriations for Marlboro County for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018 and ending June 30, 2019. First reading and title only. We know that our administrative and finance department have begun their work to prepare a document, and I think we may be meeting soon for some work sessions to take a look at what they've done so far. Anything you want to add, Mr. Administrator, Mr. Marlin?
Yes, ma'am. We've, we've met with every department head and elected official and started to roll those numbers up. There, the changes we see for next year that could increase the budget would be, you know, the state increased the retirement portion. Last year, it'll go up another percentage point this year. We've got some conflicting information on health insurance premiums, so we have to sort that out. We've got the need to replace a number of vehicles just on our normal rotation. That's a typical thing, but a little bit more than normal this year. We've also seen our railroad revenue from the county on railroad go down again this past year by $50,000, 13% drop in one year. That money is used to help fund some things here. We think that's because people are using over-the-road trucks because the fuel is so cheap right now. And if anybody's ever been involved in railroads, they're difficult in an industrial setting. Our goal, of course, is no tax increase and to not use, to use no money out of reserve. Last year, I think we were at $400,000 out of reserve, or this year we are. Of course, our ultimate goal is to lower taxes, but you know, that'd be premature to say that at this point. We have begun to offset cost with greater efficiency by looking for areas to save money. And I think you saw that in the audit report you just had, where we spent $700,000 less than, than the budgeted. Some of the things that we're doing, we're going to a fuel card system for the gas pumps. Right now, the deputies and public works have to unlock a gate and go in and do the card system and come out. We're gonna go to the same system that highway patrol and all uses where you can go to a gas station and use a card. That'll save time. That'll keep deputies moving without having to stop and that kind of thing. We're looking at a new payroll system that'll take a lot of things we're having to handhold and spend hours on every payroll and do it externally. And, and then we've looked at different departments and trying to find ways to cut there. We're not looking to cut anybody's job out, and I tell staff that all the time. What we are looking for ways is to use our time better, and when we have someone retire or someone leave, we have the option of rearranging things and maybe not filling that job. You know, we're no different than business, and I try to run it no different than business. We need to use the money the best we can, and, and that's what we're doing. So we, again, we'll get with the leadership, council leadership and set some work sessions. Hopefully, it won't be as involved as last year because we've kind of, y'all suffered through me one year, and I wanted to learn it. One thing I do want to say on the record is we are, you know, we are studying our EMS situation. And you know that that's funded out of a special tax just for EMS. And at this time, I don't know what, I don't, I don't want to say what we may be looking towards, but there could be an increase there just because there's no other source. But we're doing our best to minimize that, if at all possible. Any questions, sir?
No, but let me share my usual concerns. Before the Easter break, the House voted to amend and to suspend the 4% distribution of local government funds. Again, I think this may be the 10th year they've done that, and it comes before the Senate Finance Committee this week. So we are faced with maybe the same level or even less funding this year for unfunded mandates and increasing costs for health insurance and other benefits. So it behooves us to really make sure that our legislative delegation are looking out for our best interests. We're a small rural county. We depend on the people's tax money being returned to us. That's what the local government fund is. So a lot of people don't know about this and wonder why the county can't do more or doesn't do more. It's because we are working with bare bones. And I reach out to them, and it has done no good, but I'm not going to stop. So I just want that to be on the record. So when people ask you why we don't have this, why we don't have that, look to your legislative delegation. Ask them how they voted in support of the local government fund. They know our needs. They are from here. And we're not getting the help and support that we deserve.
Agreed.
Thank you. All right.
Is that, maybe amen might be more.
Amen.
I'm persistent. I think you all know that. Did we vote yet?
Nope.
I need a motion. That's what I thought. It's moved and second that we accept Ordinance 770, first reading and title only for our budget. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. Ordinance 771, an ordinance to approve the capital improvement plan for Marlboro County for the period of the fiscal year 2019, 2022. First reading and title only. We haven't done this in a couple of years. Mr. Marlin, would you review?
Yeah, we've done it, but we've never funded it. It's just sort of a document. But this year, we'll be looking at, we used to, if we need to buy a truck for the public works department, it was in the public works department's budget, or one for sheriff's department was in the sheriff's budget. And working with our external auditors, they feel like we need to put all those kind of things in one place. So you will eventually see that in one place, and this may be it, where everything that's, you know, got a life of more than a year or is more than $10,000 or whatever, we'll put in a capital budget. So once we start working on that, this, you'll see that going on with this.
All right. Thank you. Intertain a motion?
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and second that we approve Ordinance 771, first reading, title only for the capital improvement plan. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. Ordinance 772, an ordinance ordering a referendum to determine whether the South Carolina Department of Revenue may issue temporary permits to allow for the possession, sale, and consumption of alcoholic liquors by the drink to bona fide nonprofit organizations and business establishments authorized to be licensed for consumption on premises sales to allow the sale of beer and wine at permitted off premises locations without regard to the day, to the days or hours of sale. First reading. And this has come about with requests from businesses that we are losing tax revenues because we do not offer this to the local population and to the high volume of tourists coming through our county. Questions, comments?
No, I think this is what we have to do to get it on the ballot. Mr. Eastern reviewed it, and, and this is the steps we need to take. We are losing tax revenue, and council directed that we move forward with this, and this is the next step.
Okay. Intertain a motion?
Motion.
It's been moved and second that we approve first reading of Ordinance 772. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. It's unanimous. Ordinance, excuse me, Resolution 041801, a resolution designating the month of April as the South Carolina Fair Housing Month for 2018. It's the same number.
Same number.
Yeah. That's what I thought when I read it. The resolution that we read in 4E has the same number.
No, it's three, the first one is 318, the second one's 41801. Is that correct?
It's the same, it's the same number. It's a typo. It's a typo.
Oh, it's only documented, so.
Yeah, I know. Yeah. So this revise should be 03, and the 041801 is the correct one for 5, Item D. I'm gonna make sure. Would you like for me to read this resolution also? Do you have anybody here from the housing?
Is this a pretty standard resolution for the, that we do every year?
Yeah, I think everybody probably.
It's not here. Oh, yes, it is. A resolution designating the month of April as the South Carolina Fair Housing Month for 2018, whereas the county of Marlboro desires that all its citizens be afforded the opportunity to attain a decent, safe, and sound living environment. And whereas the county of Marlboro rejects discrimination on the basis of race, religion, color, sex, national origin, disability, and our familiar status in the sale, rental, or provision of other housing services. And whereas the state of South Carolina enacted the South Carolina Fair Housing Law in 1998, and whereas April is recognized nationally as the Fair Housing Month. Now therefore be it resolved that the county of Marlboro does designate April 2018 as Fair Housing Month. All in favor? Let it be known by. Thank you. It's passed and adopted this 10th day of April. Are there any appointments to boards and commissions? We have our finance report by Mrs. Moore, our finance director.
Madam Chair, members of council, for the month of March, expenditures were at 70% of the budgeted amount, which is approximately 5% under budget for this point in the fiscal year. We didn't receive the revenue figures until late yesterday afternoon, so I will be able to send an updated report to you and include this next week. We have begun inputting the fiscal year 2019 budget figures, as Mr. Marlin stated, and we will continue to work toward constructing a conservative budget, especially in light of the continuing shortfall in local government funds. Mr. Marlin and I finished meeting with all of the department heads and reviewed their requests, and the department heads are all very much aware of the decrease in the local government fund. government fund and worked hard to budget their departments accordingly. I had a similar paragraph to what you said earlier, Dr. Prince, about the Association of Counties' report on the budget process. I won't go through it again. Any questions?
But the Senate hasn't voted on that yet?
No, ma'am.
That's good, thank you. Keep me posted.
I will.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Marlin?
As we do every month, though, recognize our employees with service anniversaries, with five or more years of service. This year, we have Luther Brown with 16 years, Ms. Patricia Bundy with five years, Don Driggers with seven years, Harry Eastland Jr. with nine years, Kathy Pearson in the library with 29 years, and she's retiring, and Arnold Reese with five years. And you'll notice that there is a retirement celebration for Ms. Kathy at the library this Thursday from 3:00 to 5:00 in the Kenny Room. So, we encourage you to come by and speak to her. We certainly appreciate her service, 29 years of service. As far as economic development goes, we're continuing to progress with the Delta Project. We've had county crews cleaning up the perimeter of the site so that we can keep it secure. We are working with consultants to come up with a full-blown redevelopment plan for the site and hope to announce that very soon. We want to have a very public announcement about this, once we tie down a few loose ends. The Tri-County Industrial Park in Dillon, of which we're a member with Dillon and Marion County, is beginning to be full. There's prospects that'll fill up the remaining acreage. And so, now we're looking as to whether to expand in other sites or other counties with that. The agreement we have with those counties allows for it to create more sites and even in other counties. Marion County has a site that they've identified, and we're going to do an analysis of that, and we'll come to council with any action we need from the councils. The approach with this site down there has been very successful. It took a while, it was done 20 or something years ago, and now Harbor Freight's done a lot there and continuing to expand. I will keep you informed as we move forward. One thing I wanted to touch on quickly was, as I meet with industries, I'm finding more and more that they have difficulty with their workers having transportation to go to work. They have people that want to work and are good workers, but they may be carpool, and the car breaks down, and three or four people don't make it to work that day. So, what we're looking at is, are there any options for having a limited bus or van line that would take people, say, from Bennettsville to Mohawk, maybe on to Harbor Freight, back around to Ena, through Wallace or Blenheim, all this, that kind of thing. Very preliminary right now, but there's a lot of interest in this from particularly Mohawk. And so, I'm going to do my best to try to find a way that we can do this or partner with someone within the money we have available. So, that's, you know, you hear all the time, when are we going to get some new jobs? When are we going to get a new industry? But we have to not neglect the ones we have now, as we'll just move backwards. I did want to note, too, that there have been some questions in the media and from people this week about the Firestone site, which is the old Firestone Tire Plant in Firestone, South Bennettsville. We're aware of that, it's not in the county, it's in the city limits of Bennettsville. We do have a committee of the partnership that's met, and that's one thing that was brought up in there. So, the city's aware of it, and we've offered our assistance. If we have the Delta Plant demolished, maybe that contractor could help with that. So, we're not trying to shirk responsibility for it, but it's not our responsibility right now. So, we're going to let that run its course and then see what we need to do. As far as the administrator's report, great news, our cleanup day, as of late this afternoon, has 676 people signed up to help clean up the county Saturday morning. So, you know, just unbelievably successful, a real mix of groups. I mean, we have the young and the old, all races, ages, everything, male, female, we have a really good representation. And we know that there's some sign-up sheets still out, and we anticipate somewhere between 725 and 750. Just unbelievable, and I think it shows that people care about where they live and recognize that community pride's a big part of us trying to do something here. It's not, this event's not about trying to get free labor to clean up the roadside. You know, we hear people say, well, the county ought to pay for that. But 725 folks are going to give their Saturday to get out and try to get us going and get some momentum going. And then it will be up to county, then, the county then to try to keep it clean and prosecute folks that are littering and that sort of thing. So, we're really, really excited about it. Brandy here in this office has worked very hard, along with the other department heads, to coordinate it. As you can imagine, it's a big deal to put together, but we've got just all kinds of support with it. We're going to focus on the gateways to the community, so we're going, the highways going in and out of the towns and the city. We'll meet at Lindsey Park at 8:00 a.m., or you can pick up your assignment packet before then from here in the partnership office and just go start on your own. And after the event, we'll have a hot dog lunch at Lindsey Park. Again, if you get through and you want to go home, that's fine. But the Marlboro Main Society has agreed to help us by doing the hot dogs and the lunches. So, that's another partnership that's arisen out of a difficult situation during this year. On a similar subject, we've got the Tire Amnesty Month this month, and we've had about pushing 500 tires come in so far. And really, I expected more. So, I'm not sure that that's getting out there. So, if you know someone that has some tires that they've kind of had in their backyard and they need to get them out there. We did go to the city of Bennettsville, and they've agreed to reimburse us for the ones coming out of the city limits of Bennettsville. But at this time, I don't think they're going to pick them up like they pick up trash on the side of the street. So, please let people know about this. We've also said that if someone has a big stockpile of tires in their, you know, they had a business or some way they should have been dealing with it otherwise, we will pick them up or help them dispose of them at our cost, which is about a dollar a tire. So, we've had one citizen or one business that had between 2,000 and 3,000 tires, and they approached us and said, hey, you know, we know we got to clean this up. Can you help us? So, they have enough to fill a whole trailer. So, we had the trailer drop there, and they'll pay us back. So, we're not, this is the time to come clean, no pun intended. And let's get all this stuff out, and then we'll go from there. And if, I wanted also, if anyone still wants to do the cleanup day and they haven't signed up, you know, it's advertised on Facebook and all and in the newspaper of how to email or call up here, but you can just show up at Lindsey Park and we'll put you with another group. So, I don't want to discourage anyone. If you'll note tonight, we have new microphones, y'all have new microphones, and we have a new camera up here. And that's to allow us to better broadcast on Facebook Live. You know, we did it kind of, you know, kind of jacklegged the system. We taped, duct taped the camera up there, and the sound was like Charlie Brown's teacher on the old Charlie Brown cartoons. But now, we're coming out of the microphones, and we hope that it's going to be much clearer. I know that council has always had a directive to staff that we want to have, that y'all want to have open meetings and want people to know what you're doing. And I think you can hold your head high that this council's had very few executive sessions or lengthy executive sessions and are going the extra mile with having a live broadcast of the meetings. So, we're continuing to go that route. We had this month, we had a first sort of employee health-type contest, and we did a step count program. So, if you've got one of these smartphones, it counts how many steps you take every day. Or you can buy a little Fitbit you wear on your arm, and it counts how many steps. So, we told employees that they would keep track of that for a month. Whoever had the average highest steps would get a penny a step. And we didn't have as many people as I thought we would, and I think that'll build, but we had some fanatics. Is that probably the right way to describe it? I mean, we've got people in their office, you know, doing steps at their desk and all that. But anyway, one of the biggest fanatics was Ms. Susan Rivers, and she won the contest with 16,904 steps on average every day. Second was Melissa Skipper from the library with 13,608. Ross Childers with Sheriff's Department. We split it up between office people and outside people. He won with 7,900 steps. Probably going to combine them all back together because the deputies aren't walking very much. Just in case you didn't know that. So, anyway, that's a good thing for y'all to do, and it helps us build employee morale. The last thing I have, a pretty serious thing I wanted to touch on, and that's, you know, I've been here about a year and however many months, and from the feedback I've gotten and my own observations, I think it's time that we really take a hard look at our recreation program. We've done the same sort of thing for a number of years, and there are a lot of areas that I feel like we're falling short on. And so, council has appointed some folks to the board that had empty spots. You know, we have an advisory board for recreation, and we're scheduling a meeting of that next Wednesday. And so, my goal is to use that board to come up with a survey. You've all had surveys from a hotel or some business, whatever, and you can do those online surveys, and they're very, they can be very detailed. It's to develop a survey and then have everyone who's been touched by the recreation program, whether their kid's there or they play or their grandchild, and get some feedback on what's good and what's bad. And then go forward and try to fix what's bad and build on what's good. It's going to be a difficult process, but it's time. It's one of the few things that this, that citizens see from their tax dollars, and it needs to be top-notch. We have taken steps in the last month to install new scoreboards at every park. We know we had our council people pushing that, so there should be a working scoreboard at every field in the county. We've done that, and we built a scoring platform behind the backstop where they can sit and run the scoreboard. But those things are physical things that are easy to fix, and now we need to work on the programs and all that stuff. So, I will keep you updated and also ask for your help as we get into the process. That's all I had. I can answer any questions.
Thank you. We have two citizens who've asked. We have three-minute limit. First is Reverend James Smith. Come to the podium, please, and state your name and address for the record.
Reverend James J. Smith, 307 King Street, Bennettsville, South Carolina. Madam Chair and board members of Marlborough County Council, I am here tonight representing PD Coalition. And I must say to Mr. King, before I go further, if you care to give me some pennies, I walked 117,303 steps in the last 30 days for a total of 47.67 miles. Good. First of all, before I go forth to tell you anything else about PD Coalition, I want to take this opportunity to say thank you for adding PD Coalition to your budget and providing funds for them to do the job that they do. PD Coalition is a nonprofit organization, and it is with a mission statement of PD Coalition Against Domestic and Sexual Assault, is a nonprofit volunteer organization dedicated to the reduction of sexual assault, family violence, and child abuse and the needs of its victims. One case, one case of domestic violence and sexual assault is one too many. And therefore, it takes funding to try to have programs in place that will meet the needs of the victims and families of those who are victimized by domestic violence and sexual assault. Just to give you a few thoughts about this thing, learn the facts about sexual violence. One in two women have experienced sexual violence other than rape in their lifetime. One in five men have experienced sexual violence other than rape in their lifetime. Fewer than 5% of completed or attempted rapes against college women were reported to law enforcement. One in five women have experienced, completed, or attempted rape in their lifetime. 41% of women reported experiencing physically aggressive street harassment. And one in six boys are sexually abused before age 16. Those are some startling facts. And so, you see, there is a great need for your funding of PD Coalition. PD Coalition does things to help themselves, since we are a nonprofit. On this Saturday of April 28th, 2018, the Sixth Annual 2018 Charity Golf Tournament will be held over at the Country Club, on Country Club Road. And if there are anyone interested in playing golf, which I don't, I'm a fisherman and a hunter, but if you want to play golf, please help out by getting a team together. It's $50 per person or $200 a team. And our contact person for that is Ray Howe, and the number is 843-479-2967. Thank you again for what you do, but before I go, I want to introduce to you Mr. Dolores Best. Stand up, Dolores, so they can see your pretty face. Dolores is, her official title is trauma counselor, and she works in Chesterfield and Bennettsville. And we have some cards here for Dolores that you may contact her. We also have some handouts that I'm going to leave with you, that if you know anybody that need to contact her, please do. Again, I say thank you, and we pray that you will have a successful new fiscal year as you deliberate over your budget and make cuts to a budget. I know all about budget cuts and how difficult it is to try to do the right thing with a budget. I've been a state employee for 34 years and managing budgets. I feel your pressure, and we pray that God will give you the best that you can do. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. And Ms. Best has signed, if you have. All right. Thank you, welcome. All right. Pass that to Ms. Patricia, please. Mr. Woods, council members, you'll start on your end.
Okay. The, Mr. Marlin, and I know we are very pleased with the scoreboard and the stand. I got some good comment about that. And one of the harder thing that the county facing now is getting the kids out to play now. Numbers are way down throughout the county. It's probably, we just only have two teams, and we scraping up them to get them enthusiastic to play again. Reason is unknown. But, you know, we did continue to fight, and hopefully, you know, the kids enjoy themselves and maybe other kids will come out. Unfortunately, only to come out with this sport, because baseball season had begun already, but, and one day by recreation, it don't stop. Yeah, after baseball, there's football, and football, then basketball, and soccer, and, you know, so it's a whole one thing, and, you know, I'm a big advocate for recreation and youth sport and getting kids out of the house and away from them games on TV and Playstation and everything else. But I think we are on a better path of trying to upgrade what we do, our existing fields and facilities. So, we're looking forward to the future, and we think we'll, we can get our kids and parents involved all over again.
Deaconess? Now, the only thing I would have to say is that I'm looking forward to Saturday for the cleanup. All the people that have talked to me, they are really excited and willing to help, and I think we're going to have a really great time Saturday cleaning up. I've already went and got a bottle of Bengay, and I'm going to rub down Good Friday night so I'll be ready to go Saturday.
I'd like to commend the staff for organizing the cleanup this Saturday. Look forward to participating in that. And saying a good job to Ms. Kathy Pearson.
Just reiterate the same thing they said, you know, we're looking forward to the cleanup. You know, it's, whenever you see, you hear you have 700 people willing to take part in the cleanup of the county, I mean, that states that people love Marlborough County. You know, so we want to continue to grow and build on that, you know, and I think it's well represented all the way across the county. So, that's a huge success, and I'm glad to hear that we're going to try to do the Survey Monkey for Recreation. You know, we've got some, you know, the school boards up in our areas working, and so people notice it. So, as we said, you know, that's one thing that tax dollars are spent on, that majority of the people go out, either a grandparent or a parent sees their kids play, and there's nothing like looking up at the scoreboard and wanting to know how many outs or what the run is instead of running and asking a bookkeeper. So, that's just a good thing. Little tiny things is going to make, is when we're going to chop at it and get it to where Marlborough County is going to be back to where it needs to be.
This year, Raisford Avenue Park was the first year we've been having T-Wall team. We got 14 kids signing up for T-Wall, and that's really a great start this year. I'm really pleased about that. So, recreation is moving, and 14 kids is a lot, man, coming out of T-Walls. I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
I'll just like to say, I got neighbors on my street, they excited about the cleanup. They seem to be glad it's finally coming about, and one of my neighbors, he adopted the highway there by our house, and so he's real big into it, and so he's excited about it. He's already, you know, ready to go get out there and get started, but he, he cleans up anyway, and he's just glad to see other people getting involved in it. And the other thing I want to say was, I thank Mr. Marlin for going out to the boat landing.
Out at the Mohawk site, I think there was some discrepancy in who owned the land, so we figured out that the county does own the land, and we wanted to check into getting some funds to clean it up a little bit and have it where, that being we own it, that the citizens can use it and fix it to where these other boat landings around us, I mean, they got theirs looking good, you can go to other places, and there's, you know, shouldn't be any reason why we can't do the same. So we met down there and looked at everything, and you know, we're going to get started cleaning up some, and Ron's going to try to check on some money and see if we can get some funds. Anyway, I do appreciate that, and I just kind of wanted to bring that to everybody's attention because it's something that's there, and we finally getting some straight answers on it, and I think maybe we can do something at this time now where everybody can use it, so I appreciate it.
And the fish is biting.
And the fish is biting.
Yeah, like everybody else, I'm looking forward to the cleanup Saturday, I know the citizens are. That is probably one of the biggest complaints, all of us get to how the town, the county looks and stuff, and looking forward to that, and like I said, glad that we do have a good group of people that's going to work on a lot of notice. I was in Laurinburg today around Belks. I was coming up the road and saw a bunch of people with orange bags picking them up, and I kept coming down the road and I kept waiting to see the guy with the shotgun, but, and I kept looking at the people and I said, I don't believe all these people are criminals. And when I finally got up the road, the guy didn't have a shotgun, he was the driver, he was the elderly citizens from Scotia Village. They evidently were picking up the road in front of Belks and Food Line, and they were on both sides of the road, and they must have had 20 people picking up. So, you know, once we get the thing out of the way Saturday, maybe there's some groups that we can, and get them to maybe participate in a voluntary thing, not we have to do it every Saturday, you know, maybe during the week a group that wants to get together, and you know, it's going to take a good bit of work to do, so. But anyway, appreciate everything the staff has done and Brandy to really organize it. I mean, it's just been a tremendous amount of work she's had to do to get this thing organized. Thank you.
It's been a long time, I've been saying, for months and months and years and years, finally. So good things come to those who wait, and I, too, am very happy with all that's being done by everybody for this cleanup operation, and I'm waiting to hear from the football team at the high school. We might have about 200 more guys, I don't know, soon. Yeah. And for recreation, yes, that has been a critical issue for a lot of us, because there's too little for our children to do, except the bad stuff, and we have the momentum going now, we have a good advisory committee together, we have a commitment, we have a building that's underutilized, the Prince Recreation Center in Blenheim, and there are people asking about activities for adults of all ages and for girls. So balls are good, but now it's time to, to branch into something else. Budget is always a concern, and we're happy with the work that you and Mrs. Moore and the Finance Department did last year to get a hold of, to understand how the county operates, where our fundings are, and for the employees to understand that waste not, want not, so that they are also being good stewards of the money that we have to run our council, to run our county. So I thank them all for that, and I thank all of you for your input and your care and concern for all things that concern the county, regardless to the district. If somebody comes to you with a question or a concern, you don't hesitate to take on whatever it is, and to me, that's the side of people that want to work together, and I hope and pray that we can continue and set the pace for leadership in the county, as it should be. Thank you much. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Good meeting? Good meeting? We should, so what?